Good morning. My name is John Wardway. I'm reporting one slide over the road. I'm the Chair of Budget Committee. Before we open the hearing, I would like to give a little bit of background so that we will stand in a neutral position. So I'd like to begin the budget hearing for the proposed 2021 school district budget. I will yield the floor to our Budget Committee Executive official member from the School Board in a second, but I thought I would just quickly go through the process of what the Budget Committee does and what we've done to happen here. So for those of you who are not familiar, the Budget Committee is composed of nine at-large members. Three members are elected each year for three-year terms. When we have vacancies, the Budget Committee appoints a replacement for that year in lieu of reelection. There are three executive members, one from the Select Board, one from the School Board, and one from Rollinsburg Water District. So our meetings that we hold start in April, and they start with an organizational meeting where we elect the Chair. At this time, we head to appoint a replacement. Then, as we go through the year, we do quarterly budget reviews or expenditure reviews where we add expenditures to line items that have gone for each of the School Board, for the town, and for the Water District. In October, we start presentations, and the Head of each department comes forward, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, the Higher Department, and they present their next year's budget. We ask questions, go through sort of line by line what they propose, and then we'll deliberate over it, and we will vote on whether we want to bring that budget forward for a public hearing. And that's where we are today, which we're bringing for the School District this week and the next week, particularly the Town and Water District. Now we're here at the public hearing, and then from here, we will meet and deliberate after taking public comment or public interest and input, and then we will vote whether or not to bring each of the warrant articles that have corporations forward for recommending on the ballot. And if we will see on the ballot, we'll see if the Budget Committee recommends or the Select Board recommends. That's where that comes from. We then go to SB2 deliberate session, which is essentially a replacement or is a town meeting. At that point, we can question, discuss, comment on, even amend to some degree the warrant articles and include the budget, and then we go to town and go to our ballot. And for those of you who aren't familiar with the SB2 process, if the ballot, if the operating budgets do not pass, there's what's called the default budget, and that's composed of the prior year budget, and that's adjusted for things like contract obligations, and I can't remember the other ones. But there are certain rules in terms of what that default budget is. So when you see these budgets, you'll see what the default budget is as well in case it doesn't pass on the ballot. What's coming next, and I'm sorry it's not bigger, but right after this hearing, we will be meeting to discuss the School District budget and voting to bring it forward or to recommend it on the ballot. And then on Saturday next week, we will be having another hearing just like this, but this will be for the Town, the Town budget and warrant articles, as well as the Rollinsburg Water District. And we'll meet and react to that, and we'll vote whether to recommend each of the warrant articles. On Tuesday, February 4th, is the SB2 deliberate session for the School District budget. That's a moderated meeting, as I mentioned. And then on Saturday, February 8th, is the SB2 session for the Town. And Rollinsburg Water District is not in SB2 process, so that goes to their annual meeting, which I think is in March. So that's why you're not seeing it there. And then Tuesday, March 10th, is voting by ballot. So I just wanted to give a quick overview. If anybody has any questions about the process, I'd be happy to answer. And without that, today. Okay, with that, I will yield the floor to Emma Lee, who will introduce the presentation for the School District budget.
Hi, thank you for coming today. This morning, we will have a presentation for you on the 2020-2021 budget for the District of Rollinsburg, the School District of Rollinsburg, which includes Rollinsburg Grade School, Rollinsburg Middle School, and Rollinsburg High School. That will be presented by our Superintendent Dr. Robert Genon. So I'll introduce him and let him begin.
Good morning, everybody. We've got a brief PowerPoint that will walk us through all of our warrant articles, the budget specifically, and detail on some of the changes in the budget and the highlights. I'll set you. All right, so we'll go through the entire presentation and then be happy to take any clarifying questions that people may have. The budget this year is $5,719,214. And then you can see that if that article doesn't pass, that the default budget is $5,635,723, which is a difference of $83,491. So I'll talk to each of those numbers in detail as we go through the highlights of the presentation. Now, as for the budget highlights, the revenues this year, we have seen a decrease in estimated revenue, which presents a bit of a challenge, the decrease of $149,000. There was a $97,000 transfer from Capital Reserve. That was from the warrant articles for last year. The state adequacy money is, shows a decrease of $52,000 and with a net decrease of $149,735. So there is a slight decrease in revenues there. On the expenditure side for the proposed budget, you'll see that it is $19,000 more than last year, or a 0.34 percent. So a slight increase, but minimal, which brings the net budget $168,000. An increase if you look at the net on expenditures, as well as the slight loss of revenue there as well. On the next slide, we put down contractual obligations. What we try to show in this is the amount of our budget that is, I'll say, inflexible with the tuition contracts that we have, the salaries, the negotiated collective bargaining agreements, the benefits that are attached to that, and the contracted services. You can see that upwards of 97% of the budget is pretty much set. So when we try to manage a budget, realistically, there is that 3% that we have to work with, and then from that 3%, obviously, we can't zero out tax books and supplies and things. So it's a tight budget with very little flexibility, so it presents some challenges managing it. But we think we've done a pretty good job with that. Moving on to regular education, that particular line, you can see that the budget amount is down $51,000. Some highlights of that area are that we've added one day a week more physical education to increase the movement opportunities for our students throughout the day. Throughout this budget, you will see in different line items, our benefits. For health, our health increase was 4.5%, which we were actually pleased about. We've seen double-digit increases at times in the past, so 4.5% is good news. The dental increase for 3.9%, and you can also see the tuition to Marshwood for the middle school and the high school and their per pupil as well. What we've done is taken the projection of the enrollment to per pupil and the number of students that we had, and projected that out and adjusted it as we go to students that may move in or move out of district. So again, it's a snapshot in time, trying to get that as close as possible to the data. The next function is special education. You can see that there is an increase of $48,000, $49,000 in special education. Again, this is a snapshot in time of the special ed students that we have, trying to predict the services that they will need, and these are all mandated services. So we try to get that as close as possible. And again, some highlights of that, the medical and definitely you'll see that will be a recurring thing throughout the budget. And the special ed tuition, there is a slight increase in there as well. But again, that is mostly on needs of students. As students age out in 12th grade, obviously, that would come off the budget, and as students come in, it would age, and we need a budget for that as well. Chocurricular is fairly static. You'll see a decrease of about $1,000 in there. We've looked at, our chief of psych principal has looked at the intermarials and the need and what's actually happening, and the time available for students, and the offerings for students, and he felt that a $1,000 reduction in that would be accurate to what's actually happening. The attendance contracted, that is for any kind of fruency or any investigative issues that may arise. We don't usually have many, but occasionally, there's some mileage that we need to pay for or things like that. So we kept that at $500. Guiding services, again, has stayed fairly static. You'll find that throughout the budget, there are a lot of lines that we try to maintain as closely as possible, looking for reductions, obviously, but when we needed an increase, keeping it at a very minimal increase. Nursing services, same story. It's fairly static as we move through here. There has been some nursing equipment in the maintenance agreement that needed to be adjusted for, but again, minimal increases of $700. Speech services, what we try to do with speech services, again, this is based on need. If the students that test into needing needs of speech services, that's where this line takes care of. And you can see that there were some benefit changes which caused for a slight decrease in the area of speech services. ATOT and adaptive PE, another reduction of $2,500. This is basically the adaptive PE line. I think it was two or three years ago, there was approximately $15,000 to $20,000 in that area. The need was not necessarily there the last couple of years, and we've adjusted that accordingly to show a continual decrease, and we feel comfortable that we can meet all those needs with a reduction in that area of $2,500. Testing services, that's to test students and identify any specific needs that they may have. You can see that our budget, we feel, is adequate, so we're not going to be increasing that area this year. As far as library and services, there is a $16,000 decrease in that area. And again, as we go through this, you'll see some slight ongoing for staffing with the benefits. Sometimes there's a bit of an increase, sometimes there's a decrease. Some of it depends on life circumstances. If somebody gets married, if somebody gets divorced, has children. Obviously, the benefits are going to change in this particular area. We could realize a $16,000 decrease. School Board services, there's a slight increase in that area. We've increased it $8,500. The increase is based on a couple of different things. The SAU assessment goes into that area. Also, the increase in School Board services, legal services, and secretarial services to meet the needs of some of the meetings that we have. The School Board is very busy in trying to accomplish a number of their goals, so there is a slight increase of $8,500 necessary in those areas. School administration, you can see that it is an increase of $11,000 in addition to the salary and benefits of non-union staff in that area. You can see the increase of three additional days for administrative assistant. Again, the needs and the accountability and the tasks that we're charging people with continue to rise, and we needed three additional days of support to do that. And also some furniture replacement and increase in field trip support along comes in that particular function. Proprietary liability insurance, that's just an actual Primex change. That's an actual $514 increase to cover those, that particular area. Custodial services, we did have an increase of $12,000. We've had slight changes in staffing. We also have an increase of hours of the part-time custodian for additional coverage. You can see that our building looks fantastic right now, and we want to keep it that way. There were a number of projects that were done this year, including this floor, the cupola, the grand steps up front, the tiling in both the upstairs and the downstairs, and there's a number of projects that we're going to continue to do to keep this building in great shape. So this is just one more, the custodial services is just one more avenue to keep this building in top-notch shape. And you'll also see a couple of equipment pieces there, which one more, and the remodel for the backboards in here that are also in the budget. Utilities, what we've tried to do with utilities is look at three-year actuals and kind of average them out, because we never know what kind of weather we're going to get. And but we've got a $3,200 increase, and some of that was based off the actual usage of oil and also what we're hearing for a possible or probable increase of water and sewer charges as well with some of the work that the Water and Sewer Commission is doing up here. So we felt responsible to up that a little bit and budget that appropriately at $3,200 increase. The maintenance area, we've been very fortunate to get ahead on some of the projects over the past year, and we're going to continue to try to do that. We've got a $125,000 increase in that area that we've absorbed with some of the other decreases throughout the budget, so we're pretty excited about that. An increase to ground maintenance and some of the other details of things that we're trying to get done, including some magnetic locks and an upgrade throughout the whole building. What that will do is that one of the pieces is to be able to secure this area, so when people are using this area in the evening, these doors would be secure as well as the door down past the bathroom, so it would secure the annex. So this would be almost a standalone area at that point. So we're trying to get that piece done, increase the smoke detectors as well as ceiling fans in the classroom to help with airflow and some of the circulation in the building. So all of those things are very exciting to get done. You can see the equipment maintenance area. We've kept that static for this year. We feel that we can get those things that are listed there done for the existing amount in the budget. So that's a zero increase. Transportation is under the contract that we have with First Student. I believe this is, this coming year is the final year of the contract, so we will be putting that up to bid for the following year. This is about a $50,000 increase, and that's just based on contractual agreement offering our, and right now, we're getting a pretty good deal of services for not only our transportation here, but to Marshwood as well. So we feel pretty pleased about that, and we will continue to go up to bid as we work through this next school year to go into the budget process for the following year. Other support services, you see you've got a decrease of $72,000. Most of that is from the retirement payouts. You had a number of staff members retire this past year, and that was a contractual agreement of the payout. Obviously, that was a one-time expense, so that comes out of the budget for next year. So that's a $72,000 decrease in that particular period. Transfer to food service, every year, the food service programs, and this is not unique to Rollinsburg. It's very difficult to cover the expenses in any food service program, and the School District is obligated by law to cover any kind of under-expended, or I should say, underfunded part of the food service. So we're increasing that to $3,000, to $15,000 to cover that expense. So we have to cover that for our budget. So we've looked back at the last couple of years and saw what the actuals were and felt that that was a responsible thing to do to actually put that in the budget. And the transfer to Capital Reserve, again, this is from your warrant articles that were from last year. It came from no additional taxes, but those warrant articles have been filled, and that's the $97,000 decrease that we see there. Now, a little bit of information on the default budget. The default budget is calculated by the same budget as the previous year, increasing it by any contractual obligations, decreasing it by any one-time expenditures. So that's how the budget is taken care of for the default budget. If the budget fails and the default budget is what is ultimately approved, you'll see the number of things, and I won't read you the whole list, but those are some things that will come out of the budget. Those are areas that are budgeted that are not in the default budget. So you know, some additional music instruments, physical education teachers, some grounds maintenance, the water pipe focus street project, which is, we budgeted $40,000 for that particular piece. So all of those things should come out of the budget, and should they be necessary next year, then we would have to find that money somewhere in the existing budget, out of that 3% that I showed you, which means it would come out of basically Rollinsburg Grade School. Other proposed warrant articles? Article six is the collective bargaining agreement for the teachers. And you'll see on the following slide that that is a $62,343,000 warrant article. What accounts for that? There was a number of language changes that were agreed on, and they were basically clarifying language changes in the collective bargaining agreement. It's a 2% salary increase for teachers, a 75 cent increase for paraprofessionals, which was really a goal of the School Board to try to slowly increase the paraprofessional salaries. And there was no adjustment in health insurance or other savings. So it was a $62,343,000 warrant. Article seven is for your regular educational expendable trust program. Again, this is regular education tuition. You tuition students for middle school and high school to Marshwood. And every student that comes in will cost the School District the budget, the tuition amount. So $11,000 and change. If you have, obviously, by move-ins, that's about $55,000. So what we're trying to do, or what the Board is trying to do, is build up this expendable trust so we can budget more closely to the exact number. And then, should we have any move-ins throughout the year after the budget is set, then we would have a Capital Reserve to take care of that. If we don't have that in place, again, it comes out of your other budget, which is basically Rollinsburg Grade School. We would have to cut something to cover that. So that's where this expendable trust is. And this is through no additional taxation. This is only at the end of the year. If there are monies that are unexpended in the budget, then this would be loaded into this particular warrant. Article eight, this is the improvement of Capital Reserve Fund for the building improvement, should anything be needed in the future, which there is always something needed in the future, whether it's a roof, a boiler, heating and ventilation systems, a lot of those big-ticket items that it's very difficult to budget in in one particular year, $500,000, $750,000. So this expendable trust is put aside for that. And again, this is no additional taxation. This is only at the end of the year. If there are unexpended funds in the current budget, then this would be another one of the warrant articles that will be loaded as a Capital Reserve. Article nine is for the withdrawal of Rollinsburg from SAU 56. And what that would do, we had a withdrawal committee. Actually, we had two withdrawal committees. We had one from Rollinsburg and one from Somersworth. They were occurring at the same time. Somersworth has made it clear that they are going to pull out of SAU 56. Halfway through the process, Rollinsburg Withdrawal Committee and Somersworth Withdrawal Committee got together and both decided that the best interest for Rollinsburg would be for Rollinsburg to withdraw. That way, Rollinsburg would have the autonomy to decide what those services would look like. Ultimately, the best course of action right now is to do a contractual agreement, pull out and then do a contractual agreement with Somersworth to provide those services. But it does provide Rollinsburg the autonomy in the future to decide, do they stay there? Do they go someplace else in an SAU? Do they create your own part-time SAU? It gives you that authority. If this article were to fail, Somersworth has already made it clear that they're going to reactivate their withdrawal committee and proceed with pulling out of SAU 56. If that were to occur, then obviously, Rollinsburg would be reacting to try to kind of piece together services instead of being proactive and doing that. So the withdrawal committee has recommended that this, and the School Board has recommended that this take place, and this is the best course of action. Let me just look down my notes quickly to see if I've missed anything. It's going to be, the existing contract has already been a contract developed with Rollinsburg and Somersworth to provide those services. It has been approved by both School Boards, and it's going to be operated on the existing formula of calculation right now. So the exact formula that you're using right now to provide, pay for those services, that same formula is going to be utilized moving forward. The only change, immediate change in that particular, if it passes, is that Rollinsburg would no longer have a say in the SAU office. So if there should be a hiring of staff, the superintendent, if there were to be other decisions on the building itself, the SAU building itself, the budget itself, you wouldn't have to be saying no. But right now, the way it's set up, you have a minority vote in those decisions as it stands now. And this has already been taken to the New Hampshire State Board of Education and approved by the State Board of Education. So should this pass, the plan is that this is going to affect as of July 1st, and we feel very strongly that it will be a very smooth, seamless transition. Article 10 is to see if we send our grade six students to Marshwood. This was, if you remember, there was a petition warrant article, advisory warrant article on last year that had passed, and the School Board had committed to looking at all educational benefits and pros and cons of both situations, upholding a public hearing for a public forum for feedback, which they've conducted this year. And they've looked at all possibilities, and the recommendation that I brought forward, as well as the School Board, is that you've got a great little school here and to leave your sixth grade as they presently are. But the School Board felt that there was enough public interest in asking the School Board to take a number of steps. in asking the school board to take a number of steps. So that's why they're bringing forward a warrant article ultimately for the community to decide. The recommendation is that this, they do not recommend this article. There are reasons that the students, both schools are outstanding. Marshwood's great, Rollinsburg's great. Both settings are very good. There is no compelling reason right now to send grade six to Marshwood. You've got a wonderful school and a wonderful education here. In two years, five years, my crystal ball's kind of cloudy, but down the road, if your enrollment increases and space gets tighter and tighter, perhaps you would have to revisit this. And maybe at that particular time, it would make sense to send the sixth grade to Marshwood. But at this particular time, this is not recommended. Now, on the next sheet, we've tried to detail out, give people a little bit more information as to how we arrived at three hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And again, that's the estimated cost for next year. If this were to go into action, it would be approximately, and I say approximately because it's based on enrollment and some other things, it would be that amount every year. So ten years, three point two million dollars, you know, it would be an ongoing expense. We took the tuition rate, which is eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. The projected number of students at twenty-seven students, we took the existing students that are in the fifth grade, as well as we know a couple of parents that have students that said they would, that are not presently in Rollinsburg, that would be going to Marshwood. So we've added those in because we need to responsibly budget for them. So your base tuition is three hundred and five thousand dollars. That's what this is going to cost us in tuition. We've added special education. Again, that's a snapshot in time, taking the existing fifth grade and trying to project what those needs would be. And then the transportation cost of seventy-one thousand dollars, that's to add an additional bus. We've done a pretty good deal with first student right now because we are combining routes, if you will, using one bus for the elementary and middle run and the high school run. So with that combination, we've got a pretty good deal. But if we need to add an additional bus with an additional driver from scratch, it's going to cost about seventy-one thousand dollars. So you can see the increase is about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We also looked at projected savings. And the savings, your cost for the building is not going to change. You still need a building and administration. You still need a librarian, a nurse, and all of the overheads. So that piece really isn't going to adjust by taking out twenty-seven, twenty-five students. But there is, we did project a reduction of a classroom teacher. Obviously, if we lose one grade level of students, we don't, we can reduce by one teacher and also one paraprofessional. So we figured those in as reductions, responsible reductions. So you can see, that's how we arrived at the figure of three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of the warrant article that we'd need. So that would be obviously an increase that would be ongoing thereafter because we're not going to do this for one year. If it happens, my recommendation would be that stay there, which means it's an ongoing expense. Now, I know that there has been some discussion about if the students stay, you know, our per pupil cost of seventeen, eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars, that that money could be utilized to pay that tuition, so we'd be saving money. Like I said, it doesn't work that way because that per pupil is figured on your overhead, your administrative costs, your collective bargaining agreement, the staffing that you have, heat, oil, electricity, all of those things really don't change. So it would be a necessary increase of three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So with that, that's the brief overview of all of our warrant articles. And I'll turn it back over to the budget committee, and we're glad to take any questions if you have anybody else.
I'll get up here because there's no microphone. Is there any questions or comments? The microphone is over here. So if you have a question or a comment, just go up to the microphone, you can give your name and where you live, and then state a question, and we'll respond accordingly.
Hi, Nancy Dehome, forty-four Rollins Road. Now, on the original transportation budget, is that for the five buses? Or does that include special ed also?
And I'll just ask if the school board can answer questions.
I'll ask Katie to be specific on this.
Are you talking about the increase?
No, I'm talking about the total transportation that you have on one of your slides.
It's both regular and special ed.
So how much is the per cost? How much is the per cost per bus? Because the way it equals out, if you just do the five buses, it's only sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Because in talking to the bus company, we're getting a good deal right now. The way the contract was set a couple of years ago, we're almost getting an extra run or a half a run because we've combined utilizing the same bus for multiple runs. So it's not, we're not adding, the way the contract is presently set up, we're using one bus and one driver for multiple runs at multiple levels. So because of that, we're getting a good deal in that. So when we renegotiate our contract, I fully expect that some of that is going to be an increase because we're, like I said, we're getting a good deal, we're doubling up on some of the runs. So if we add a standalone bus, and I ask the bus company this, if we add a standalone bus with a new bus, a new driver, a standalone roof, that's where the seventy-one thousand dollars comes from.
So we still wouldn't be combining like we are now with the five buses?
We could look at that. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to, like we do every year for bus runs, we have to look at the number of students, the mileage that we have to do, so where they're located in town. I mean, that's always a balancing act because some people will say, you know, our buses aren't full, we can put more students on. But we can't have students on the bus for, you know, an hour, hour and a half going around town. So that will be looked at, but responsibly, we need to budget for that to make sure in case we need all of that.
All right, I was just curious because it only comes out to sixty-five thousand dollars.
You're right.
And just to add a little bit more information, when Dr. Giallotti says we have a good deal right now, we do. Because it was five years ago when we actually started sending students to Marshwood. We have already signed a five-year contract. The bus company, very generously, the school board's been grateful for this all along, said, we're not going to charge you more. This is your contract. And even though we have to add the two buses, we have to add two buses to go back and forth to Marshwood, we are going to honor the contract. So they have been very generous with us.
So is the contract up this year, or is it in the one that we're looking at now?
The one you're looking at now, we've got one more year, which is this budget that we're presenting today.
Okay.
So that means, like I said, we go out to this coming year for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Can't be seen in the room, but deeper than that. So as usual, I have a number of questions. Can you tell us what the tax impact is for moving the sixth graders to Marshwood?
It's one dollar a load of cents.
One dollar, okay, thank you. And can you tell me how many special ed students are budgeted in at fifty-eight thousand dollars?
I don't think that's something that we can share because it's based on need and we need to protect the privacy of the students.
Well, yeah, it depends on the actual students, but just how many students? Is it like five or more? I don't even know.
Are you talking about the sixth grade number?
Yes.
As a school, I would feel comfortable giving you a ballpark number of, you know, thirty or forty, if that were the case. But for an individual grade level, I hesitate because you're such a small school district that I'd be... That would make me uncomfortable to do that.
So that number is based on actual services right now for a particular number of students? It's not an estimate?
It's a snapshot in time. So looking at the existing students, looking at the existing services, and trying to calculate our best guess on what would be needed next year. So it's not a, it's not a, you know, percentage estimate. It's looking at what we have and trying to project that out.
Okay, all right. The ventilation plan, has that been bidded out? That's just a plan, so that's not even any work? You're estimating fifty thousand dollars in plans?
That's for doing the study, drawing the plans, doing a kind of course of action. That's correct.
And was that, did you get an estimate from the company?
We haven't bidded out yet because we don't have the money yet.
Okay, so it's a guess?
Yeah. An educated guess.
Okay. So last year, our operating budget was five million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, twenty-three dollars. This year, we're at five point seven-ish, which is closer, it's about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar increase in operating costs. Can you talk a little bit about where that's going? Like, what are we using with this one score?
Well, I think that if you look at the entire budget as a whole, the slides that were just presented, there's collective bargaining agreements, there's contractual agreements, there's heat, oil, utilities, there's the bus contract that is increasing, there's any number of maintenance projects. I mean, I think that we try to detail it out to give everybody as much information as possible about where that's going to be expended.
Okay. No, it's just because the net increase in operating budget year over year is, it looks like nineteen thousand, but it's really more like a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, you've got your, again, you've got your, and Kate can help me out, the ninety-seven thousand dollars that were loaded into the warrant articles needs to be accounted for every year. So, I mean, that's a piece of it as well.
Right, and that's always a problem I've had with the operating budget, the way it's presented, is that the warrant articles become part of the operating budget and they never come back out. And when you see a decrease, it's not a true decrease in the operating cost because the warrant articles are there. So last question for you. So five years ago, we were at five point two million, and now we're at five point seven million. So a half million dollars over five years is a lot of money. Can you talk a little bit about where we're investing that? Or we've invested that half a million in the last five years?
Well, I can give you a brief answer, I mean, I wasn't here five years ago. But annually, I think that, my guess is, again, I wasn't here, that the board and the superintendent have gone over any kind of increases in where that money has gone. I mean, there have been cost of living increases, fuel, electricity, all of those things that, you know, I think that our own private budgets have inched up over the last five years as well, so.
I would say tuition as well is a huge piece of your budget. The tuition for Marshwood or Summersworth, whenever you have those tuitions, that's an increase every year as well.
I mean, that's always the X factor with a school district that tuitions students out is that you've got a large portion of your budget that, you know, you may have minimal control over, as far as that tuition going up as well. I mean, that's a good chance to be a project.
Okay, I understand, I mean, thank you. Yeah, I'm just a little concerned that, you know, in less than three years, if we continue to progress this way, we're going to be at six million dollars. And our enrollment really hasn't changed. So I hope that the budget committee takes a close look at where our increases are going. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just also like to point out that we also made some significant investments in this building. Sorry, so I'd like to also point out that we've made some significant investments in the building throughout the years as well. So like Mr. Giallotti was saying earlier, we have the cupola, the new stairs, we've done lots of the parking area. So while a lot of that has gone into education, we've also been reinvesting into this building to maintain.
The other piece of that that I might comment on is the board and the administration is very cognizant of that fact. And as you see last year, this past year, not only did the board get ahead on some of the building maintenance and projects, but there was a pretty good sum of money that was turned back to the town to reduce taxes as well. So, you know, I think that every penny that the community is kind enough to trust us with, we've been very responsible in how it's being utilized. And if there are any particular areas as we get into the year that we can save on, I think that history has shown that we're doing that.
I just want to call up. So, you know, knowing that you've been investing in the building, and I see that there's a line item that the rate has kind of gone from maybe a hundred thousand to close to three hundred thousand, and that you're using that for the building, do you expect that to ever kind of level off and stop growing? Or are we going to continue to see hundred thousand dollar increases year over year in the operating budget in order to maintain the building?
My expectation would be that that will decrease and level out. Mostly because a lot of the things that we've been doing have been, have been kind of the big-ticket items, like re-tiling hallways, for example, so that they will last us another, you know, seventy-five years. And that also reduces our maintenance costs on those floors. Redoing the cupola, hopefully that will never have to be done in my lifetime. Again, the stairs, the parking, so, you know, parking, we will not have to redo the whole lot. Again, we may have to, you know, resurface it as opposed to that. So I expect that those maintenance costs will go down and be more maintenance as opposed to complete renovations.
And also, if you look at your own private homes, over time, you know, you need a new roof, you need new windows, you need a new furnace. I mean, those are ticket items that happen everywhere. And what I've found over the years is that a little bit of maintenance, although expensive, saves on the back end. And if you're maintaining things, it might last ten, fifteen, or twenty years. That's a lot cheaper than the cost of replacing those things in full ten years from now, five years from now. So hopefully, that will ultimately help the expenses.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a follow-up to that. So it used to be we had warrant articles for this stuff, but now it's all built into the budget. Can you tell me what made you go this direction versus doing warrant articles?
So I think, you know, we will likely still do warrant articles for some of the larger, you know, larger-ticket items. I think that, you know, we just have discussions around the board and determine whether we think something elevates to the level of a warrant article. These items, I think we feel like are necessary, first of all. Like the ventilation system that are in this school is not, is not good for the students. So we feel like that's something that is really needed to be part of the operating budget so that we can move those projects forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, and can I also just point out, this is one of the reasons that we have created this capital improvements fund that we have. So we have two hundred and fifty, maybe, I'm looking for, somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now in a capital improvements fund. So that when we get these large-ticket items, like Mr. Giallotti was saying, if we need to replace the roof, if we need to replace the boilers, we will have a fund to tap into for that, and we won't have to put a warrant article on so that we can kind of degrade some of those tax responsibilities from the town.
I have just a comment also about the, when we're talking about some of these things that we're doing, some of the project maintenance, you know, we try to prioritize what needs to be done. We triage this stuff. And there are a lot of things that are brought to our attention that will require immediate attention. The other thing, though, is we've seen, in some cases with the town, it's not always a good idea to flip things off because, well, next year it's not going to be a lot cheaper. So we're always trying to keep that in mind as well. And we're very cognizant of, you know, the town's appetite to pay for some of these larger projects. And I think having the warrants gives everybody an opportunity to say, this is something we want to do. Maybe not this year, but at least we're putting it before the town. Really, when the larger ticket items, we are very, very aware of, you know, spending those hours. But we think it out, we make sure that we have, we have very robust discussions on these things. We don't always agree, but our priority is having a safe school. We want to make sure these kids are safe, that, you know, we're not having things fall from the ceiling, issues with broken tiles. As you can see from the building today, that you came into, the floor looks great. Out there looks excellent, in the main building as well. We've done a lot of work, but unfortunately, things cost money. But by paying for that, the, these things should last, well past all of our lifetimes.
I'd just like to qualify something I just said, which was that we wouldn't have to put a warrant article in. To remove money from our capital improvements fund, we would need to put a warrant article in. That would be something that was already done by the taxpayers. However, it would not affect, it would not have a tax impact to money, just to be clear. Thank you.
Will you be making a comment as a...
Yes, I got a comment. Also, a lot of these projects are done...
Are you making a comment as the budget committee or as a citizen?
Not the budget committee, so I'll make it as a budget committee guy. I wanted, I'll do it. No, a lot of these repairs are also done with surplus money each year, not warrant articles. So, they have extra money and they find a way of spending it. That's how a lot of these repairs are being done. I'm not saying they're not needed, but they're just being done that way.
I'm speaking, I guess, as a personal citizen, but, but I can speak loudly enough. One of the things that happened this year, and you saw in your tax bill in December, and that is the decrease in the tax rate. That came solely from the amount of money that the school district returned to the town. So, to me, that shows the responsibility, how responsibly the school district is managing, responsibly have given it. So, they have done all of the things that they've done to the building, as has been outlined for us today, and responsibly dealt with education for all of the students in our town, and were able to return money to the, to the fund balance such that our tax rate was reduced this year.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments they'd like to raise? Hearing done, I will declare this hearing closed. And in a few minutes, probably no sooner than ten o'clock, we will open our budget committee meeting where we will deliberate the school district budget and warrant articles and whether to recommend each one. So, it's an open, the public meeting, welcome to, to look in and follow along, but we will be around at ten o'clock. Thank you. Hello, okay, everyone, if you'd like to get the budget committee meeting started, I think we're ready to take your seats. Unfortunately, we don't have a microphone at the table, so if you want to hear what we're saying, we can come over. I'm not touching the...
This one works pretty good if you want it.
You want to bring it over here?
That's up to you.
Sure. My school didn't have an ED club, so...
Why don't you, will you just go find your seat? I'm trying to fix the phone. I got it.
Okay, it's, um...
Don't worry about that, I got it now.
Ten oh seven AM, and we're going to open our budget committee meeting as scheduled to deliberate, potentially vote on each of the warrant articles. And we also have an item to follow, with follow-up questions for the Warren-Sewer District, which we have representation here today. So, the first part, we will go through the school district articles, and then if the school board members and staff want to leave after that, they're welcome to leave ahead. So, can we go through attendance with Brad and I? I think we're missing Bob Negan and Paul Cast. So, otherwise, we have, we have a quorum, and we can, we don't need to go through it. Do a roll call. So...
The Warren-Sewer?
We do not, that's Bob Negan, and so he's missing as well there. But...
Paul Cast?
Paul Cast, yes, just what we said, yeah, Paul Cast. Sorry. I think I said it, I didn't repeat it, sorry. We do have a firm here to, to answer questions on Warren-Sewer district budget, if you have them. So, the first, I know, business will be to have motions to move forward on the warrant articles. And so, entertaining a motion on the first warrant article, which I believe is the operating budget, is that, is that right, Emily?
Yeah, second.
It's the second, wow. Oh, there's the second.
I, I move to recommend the first warrant article as written.
Motion by Emily Leach, second by Suzanne Ewert. And any discussion?
Just so everybody's clear, could just understand that it's the operating budget that was applied, and it's seven hundred and fifty thousand twenty-three dollars, is that...
Did everybody hear that? It's for the operating budget as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That warrant article will not be recommended on the ballot. From the committee. The next warrant article, command of motion? I think they're later in the package. Is that a motion from, from you here to, to recommend the Article Six as written? Right, second? Second from Denise Knowles. Any discussion? Suzanne?
So, this, so this agreement came to the meeting, it's the first time we see it, the budget committee. So, it happened since our last meeting, so we're just kind of looking at it, seeing now. So, I mean, I have some questions. I know that with the prior collective bargaining, the school board was very interested in getting on a path of trying to do more cost sharing with the teachers, with their health insurance rates. And so, it seems there's been no change to that in this collective bargaining agreement. So, I wonder if our school board, was this a goal, did the school board change its plan? Anything that you could...
Uh, we have not changed our plan. That is still a continued goal for the school board. It did not work out in this, in our negotiations. Not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure how much I can say about negotiations. I'm a little, I'm a little, um, going too far in that, not fair. Yeah.
Could we recognize the superintendent to answer the question, please?
The collective bargaining agreement, proposed collective bargaining agreement has been ratified by the school board, it has been ratified by the union, so it is all public information at this point. So, in this particular round of negotiations, the health insurance has remained the same, there was no reduction in health.
Could I ask what a share, the teacher's share is, and how it compares with the town? And maybe Denise could help with that now?
Hey, I don't know what the back, I gotta pull it up. I don't know what I presented.
Question our board, see, this is, you know, because we didn't need, you know, a portion of the debt on it.
I think, I think it's eighty-twenty, but, no.
That sounds, yes, that is what it is. Comes back to me.
Yeah.
At present times, the, the school district pays ninety-two point five percent of a single plan, eighty-seven point five percent of a two-person plan, and a family plan.
So, that's a pretty significant difference, I think. And I'll just take that right now, and, and so not see any movement here towards that. And the three percent across-the-board increase that the teachers, that are represented by this collective bargaining agreement, is more than what the town is, the base rate increase that the town has agreed to, which is two percent. And admittedly, some town employees are getting more for market adjustments, the like. But the sort of base is two percent, is that not correct? So, that's my concern. I'm curious to, I have a similar concern about this. Pardon?
This is a two percent increase.
Oh, I thought I heard someone say three percent.
The paraprofessionals have a larger increase than teachers do. And as you may recall, that was a good focus of this school board last year, was to get the paraprofessionals up to closer to an I with, um, the level of thing. And we are completing that goal here.
Is it possibly that the overall increase was three, the sort of, I'm sort of at a three percent...
Yeah, so the overall, the net salary and benefit projected costs is up three point sixty percent.
Okay, I think that's worth...
That reflects eight, run around eight point five for step movement and a seventy-five cent increase for paraprofessionals. And for teachers, that's two point six one percent, which includes step movement and seventy cents. And also, we could find that's a goal on the, on the, on the card.
Okay, all right, thank you, that makes sense. I'll just add one more point before I hear what other people have to say. You know, parity and equity, I mean, there are reasons why things aren't always the same, but still, it has such a discrepancy between what the town employees pay for their medical insurance, the eight-twenty split, and what the teachers pay. And coupled with the fact that there was really no movement, not even a small movement this year, just concerns me.
I would like to see the teachers pay more of their benefits too. I mean, like Suzanne just said, there's no movement. Should be at least some movement trying to move down, in my opinion. So, that's the only reason why I think I would vote against this, is because of that.
I'd be better to discuss your questions on the proposed one.
How heavily emphasized was that point in the negotiations? I mean, were, was the school board on with the information we have about the town's policy when they negotiated this? Because, you know, you, I would think we'd be on board with it, but if the communication wasn't there, I mean, the emphasis probably wasn't as strong as it might have been.
So, Charlie, I was kind of a similar thought, but I was on the budget committee last year, so I don't know if this discussion happened last year and if we're repeating the same sort of concern to move the cost sharing toward a parity with the town, more like eight-twenty relationship to what our town budget and our town employees commit. If we hadn't asked that of the school board before, then perhaps this is the year to make that request, that we start moving in that direction to address the difference.
Yeah, that's the point I was trying to make, and, uh...
Just to answer your question, it was a point of negotiations this year, and all of that information was, I mean, it was a lengthy point of negotiation.
Just with my history with the, with budget, and I was on the school board, and, and now I'm a selectman, I, it is, it's always been the goal of the school board to try to get more money paid towards it. The difference is that the school district and the town is not. So, there are reasons, when you hire employees, this is where they go, is the town. You knew, I know from that history, and I'm negotiating, and I know what you're going through, and it's really hard once you give it, to do it, you know? So, I know it's always on your plate, but when you're negotiating, you're, you don't know what they gave up on the other side, you know? You know, because it, it could have been a bigger dollar amount that they didn't get the percentage that they might have gotten something larger. And I know it's long hours and it's a lot of work, and so I should continue to make efforts. Yeah, and, and, you know, I will point out that, you know, two percent is the town's baseline yearly, generally yearly, increase. And while, yes, the school board is always looking to decrease healthcare costs because that really benefits the town far in the future, this does result in, you know, a two percent increase for the teaching staff. So, much like the rest of the town, maybe the town plays a game.
Just so that we're all on the same page, the town doesn't really have steps, so their teachers are getting more than two percent because their steps built into the contract. And the only way, from my experience, and he's going to confirm that or not, the only way that the town hopes rectified that is that occasionally we would do market adjustments, so that's how we manage that. But there isn't an automatic increase for a year's experience, which, you know, is to the town's advantage when we get employees who can stay. And so, the town has, the town also has a difficult time, even though they're not unionized, we're trying to keep, you know, the town straightened up its salaries. So, again, I'll just say, I'm just disappointed, I'm disappointed to see it. I don't know how I'm going to vote yet, I'm working on it in my head, but I'm disappointed to see it, and I don't know whether, how strongly we should try to send a message, but, you know, and they did make some movement last year. You know, just even a little would have been helpful, but it's, you know, zero percent. So, that's hard to see.
Now, the teachers getting two percent, are they getting a step also?
Um, I'm not sure.
Only those that qualify. Once you reach the top step, you no longer get steps. So, it's only those teachers who aren't on the step.
There's no longer, Jeff?
No, there is, yes.
So, they are getting increased, increased besides the two percent for the ones that are in the top step?
For certain, if you've been there that long, there's a calculation. For certain, if you've been there that long, there's a calculation.
Can you just confirm, is your step track scale still five percent across and five percent down? I'm sorry?
I believe that is roughly true, yes. With the increases over the years, they're like two percent or one and a half percent or whatever.
But the percentage, if you get more education and you haven't reached your N, you qualify for five percent. And then the years of service, you get five percent. And then after that scale, how many years is it? Seven? Yeah, when you go into longevity, is it seven years or higher?
Yes, it's eight years.
Eight years, okay. So then you get five percent for every year. So whoever's on the scale potentially could get the two percent plus ten percent.
You'd have to verify those numbers.
Well, if you didn't change your new contract, they're five and five. But, so you have to be upfront and make sure that that's acknowledged as well. Because if you can't get it on your, on your insurance, maybe your negotiation tactics are needed to be reducing the scale. Yeah, just a thought.
Again, John, new to this, pardon me, but I'm thinking about the larger context, and I'm listening to these numbers, and I'm very impressed with these increases. But I'm also wondering about the larger context, and is this, were these built in to maintain teachers and to be competitive in the, in the world of, you know, education in New Hampshire? Are our teachers going to leave if they're, you know, not paid at least relatively equal to what other teachers in there with their experience and education would be paid? I'm listening to these numbers, and I'm sort of assuming maybe these were decisions made to accommodate or address the disparity in pay by laws, to laws for teachers versus other larger communities?
So I would say that our teachers are well-paid in comparison to other teachers. So, and let me back that up, which is that we went for many, many years where we did not have a contract passed. So we had, was it the year before last, do I remember correctly? That we made some significant adjustments to salaries based on the fact that we needed to get people up to their proper step, because, so if you don't pass a contract, the teacher doesn't get their, their step work, step change in their salary. So, for example, someone who has not had contract passed and let's say had a year, is missing all those steps that they might have gotten in the meantime. So we have, we have recently caught teachers up to that. That was a really hard time for a lot of our teaching staff. And I think that while we, you know, our teachers are, you know, on pace with other schools right now for their salaries, you know, we are very cognizant of the fact that this happened and that was a difficult time for them. It was hard for the school board also. Also, and I feel like, you know, we, so we're, we're cognizant of not wanting that to happen again.
Denise?
Paras were also very underpaid, and some of the paras using on their contract, part of the union contract, it was helping to bring them up to where they should have been. They're not on the track of steps, they are like teachers, but they were very underpaid. The other... I think, I think when the track and step program came on, our teachers weren't taught their area teachers were, were a small school, small budget. It was a way of getting them to be able to get, it also promoted increasing their education because it's based on one, your, your track is based on education. So many after their masters, I mean, so it gives them to be going back, just getting more qualified as a teacher, so that, that was an incentive. And then the other one is to give them service. But I think what this first was, it worked for them where they should have been years ago, you know? So it's something that's really been working on, you know, reducing those percentages a little bit, but I think they still want to encourage teachers to go back into their education and overcome the more, you know, I think that's important.
So one of the things in particular, it's what I'm going to do, and I'm still not sure, difficult, is that the paraprofessionals are misgrouping the teachers. And the paraprofessionals, I hear, are not well-paid, market-wise, either. And so I may have a strong disappointment about the collective bargaining agreement with results of medical, for the professional staff, the paras don't even, correct, the paras don't have any medical benefits. And, and so I realize, I mean, if I don't know on this, then is that, you know, the eight percent increase that would go to the paraprofessionals, which is, you know, a really welcome thing and deserved thing, so it's a difficult decision. And the other part of me says, how come we're in the same union? Because obviously, the board has agreed, but usually you don't have your hourly, your salary in the same union.
I know there is a, there is a lower limit on how many, a lower limit on how many we needed to have a unit. And I don't know whether we need that criteria now, maybe.
Mike, yes, he is, and again, I wasn't here five, ten, fifty years ago. My guess is it's sheer numbers, that they didn't have enough numbers to...
Yeah, I mean, I was on the board at the time when that was, that happened, on this school board. It was not something that we really wanted to have them together because it just, it was so different right then and right. The paras were so underpaid, and so if the union contract with the percentages of the teachers union is high enough, they all, they ask nothing because it's part of the program.
This is really difficult.
So that is really hard for me because I didn't think that they should be together. It was their choice to be part of the school teaching union, but I don't know if it was because of numbers or...
It's not just what the union, what the folks who are going for the union, but the state public, the labor unions, it has, you know, things that it looks at and it doesn't like generally, not only people mixed in with professional people, because in most cases, those professional people are having to have some say, maybe not direct supervision, but some say overpay increases for those who don't, who are not supposed to be part of the same union, which will come in us. So that's what makes the inclusion of the paras here is what makes it...
Joe?
So this six, two thousand overall, does that include the cost of living increase as well as all these other step ups? So that's the total cost?
Joe, can you look at the last page of this thing? Here's a nice, right there.
And then, I guess, and then for the, on the pie chart where we show the contractual areas, where we see the benefits of thirteen, I think that number is a little skewed, I guess, because you are probably putting the benefits into that pool. I mean, when I look at the overall budget, this is just a column, but when I look at the overall budget, the, for the professional side, the benefit package is between forty-five and fifty. I've said, I've said that before. And, and to me, that's an unbelievable amount in terms of total cost. So in, in my world, when we've dealt with people before, we would produce a sheet of total compensation at people, which is, here's your base salary, here's your vacation, here's your probably allowances in this world, but also here's your benefits. And people can say, hey, this is my total package, and it sure looks different than a sixty thousand dollar. And if you put in fifty percent, your total package is probably ninety, twenty thousand. So I think it's some of that education that has to go on, and I mean, how long is this contract for?
When you put in...
But I think there's, you know, I believe that people having more of a focus and a share in their costs, especially on the medical side, they tend to be more efficient. That's the whole thing that's getting talked about at a much larger level. So I think it is something to look at down the road. I mean, sixty thousand in the scheme of things isn't that bad, eventually it becomes a goal on the open field. You have to try to get people a little more involved in ownership of their total compensation guidance.
So are you running for school board? Any other questions or comments on this article?
Just, if the budget committee does not recommend and support this, what is the far from that? What are the, what are the consequences to the school board and...
So basically, what it will say underneath the board article, it will say, "School Board recommends," and it will say, "Budget committee does not recommend."
Right. I'm assuming our influence would be great in the community, but you may know. So let's say it were great, and this failed to pass, what was the result of that?
The result of that is that they continue on their current...
Thank you.
Other questions? Ready to vote? Yep. I already said that. Okay. A yes would be to recommend what the board article had written, and no would be to not recommend the board article had written. Check three. Clear on that? Can't read it. So Denise?
Yes.
Yes. Angela?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
All of them not here. Lynn?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
You ready?
Yes.
Charlie?
No.
Peter?
No.
Leading the time here, there are six, yes, I'm sorry. I skipped your three. I'm sorry. You were first on the list.
Chair, size chair. I was going to use the opportunity to get on the soapbox again, which I often want to do. So I'm going to vote yes, but I'll tell you why. It's the paraprofessionals. I cannot vote no, knowing that the paraprofessionals will not get that overall viewpoint on personal fees. However, I hope to be on the budget committee next year, so I'm hoping that I don't be this budget committee, but wherever the budget, however the budget committee is constituted next year, I'm hoping we can have a discussion with our school board room and talk about the medical benefits piece of this. So my vote is that I'm going to vote yes.
That gives us what we said on yeses and no's, all abstaining. None, most of the talking, I think, is supported. So the passes that we will recommend, everybody will recommend. Do we have a motion for Article seven? So Angela makes a motion to recommend Article seven had written. No, that's, see if Rollford School District will vote to raise an appropriate sum of seventy-three thousand dollars to be added to the regular education fund as well. We did the full budget in the first, so it's... So is everybody clear where Article seven is? Any discussion? Oh, wait a second. Second from the, any discussion? Anybody to vote? We will pay the voice vote here. All in favor, say aye. Any vote? Any staying? The motion passes, and we will recommend on the ballot Article seven. Motion on Article eight, to see if the Rollford School District will vote to raise an appropriate sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to be added to Rollford's school building improvement capital reserve fund previously established. This sum will come from June thirty, twenty twenty, twenty dollars, available to transfer on July first, twenty twenty. No amount to be raised in taxation. The school board, if they still have a motion?
Sorry for...
Second from Denise. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any vote? Any staying? And that motion passes. Article nine does not have appropriation, and so I don't believe we have a position on that. Article ten, to see if the Rollford School District will raise an appropriate sum of three hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to support the first year of sending grade six students to Marshwood Middle School, starting for the twenty-fourteen, twenty-twenty-one school year. Every year thereafter, the appropriate amount will be placed into the operating budget. The school board does not recommend, we have a motion to recommend this article.
Motion to discuss, well, can I move it?
Well, it has to be...
You have to put it on the floor, so...
Yeah, we're on the floor, and so...
I believe, for information or whatever, I believe that somebody can move to not recommend it, and that's what's up for discussion. Should be a problem. Should be a problem.
I know, going into a parliamentary procedure...
Yeah.
Then you can choose.
I believe it should be worded as a positive motion, and if the board doesn't support that, just voting no.
Right. We have to put it on the floor. Mike, yes. Thank you.
Move, we, discuss something. Move, proceed with this one. I'm a good child.
I'm guessing that you know what you want, how you vote. So is there a second? A second from Denise. Discussion? You ready?
So, so if I listen to the professionals who have been involved in all of this, there apparently is no educational benefit to this. So some students will do better at Marshwood, some students will do better have done at Rollford Grade School, and so there's six of one, half dozen of the others. So there's no educational benefit to this. But there certainly is a financial cost to this, of three hundred twenty-six thousand dollars.
One dollar, eleven cents left here.
And how much?
One dollar, eleven cents.
So I don't see any, any reason to, to move the six graders now. There may be, you know, space needs and whatever in the future, as we've been told, but at the moment, I see no reason to do this, and I'm really not going to recommend this.
I have a small comment, and I think that whether or not it's a benefit is somewhat an opinion. Some people feel very strongly there is a benefit, some people feel strongly there isn't a benefit. I, like you, Suzanne, I kind of heard logical explanations of it on both sides, they both have valid points, but it's a watch, I mean, as you said, it's sort of six, one, that doesn't matter. So I just want to make a point to some people who feel very strongly that there is a benefit. So with that, is there any other discussion on this? I think this, people realize is that the marginal cost of sending a new student who comes into town in Marshall is eleven grand. The marginal cost of that six grade student staying here in Rollford is almost nothing. And that's why the difference in this cost here. So this is very much a linear cost. If you send twenty students, it's going to be twenty-five, what's the fact? If you send twenty-five, it's a person being able to spread it. So it's, we're looking at it from a financial standpoint, you have to look at those numbers.
Any other discussion? We have, I'll give the voice vote on this one.
You want to...
Yeah, still a vote, man. Come on, yeah. I'm listening, I'm going to start with Suzanne.
Can we play a right?
Sorry. A yes, a yes would be, yes, good point. A yes would be to recommend, and no would be to not recommend. Suzanne?
No.
Denise?
No.
Angela?
No.
Emily?
No.
Here, Lynn?
No.
Charlie?
No.
I'm sorry. Charles George, I should have... Same vote. Sorry about that, guys.
To Charlie, say no.
Peter? Bob Dean is not here. We have, so the article, we will not recommend to the law Article 10. That concludes all of the articles for the School District budget. We can.
One question. Okay, what's the tax impact with everything lost revenue, and if all these warrant articles pass on the town?
If all of our articles pass?
Since we voted for them.
Like you're including sixth grade?
No.
No, including sixth grade. Okay.
$1.09. $1.09.
That's with Susan.
That's your credit.
Yeah, with Susan's credit.
Yeah.
So. Seventy-eight. Yeah, with sending them, if everything passed.
Yeah.
It's six cents on the operating budget.
Yeah.
Twenty-one cents on the collective bargaining agreement, a dollar eleven on the sixth grade, and 51 cents for a loss of revenue. And so if you take out the sixth grade, seventy-eight cents.
Yeah, that's right.
It's going in.
Where's the, where's the?
It's going forward, yeah.
Yes. That's the point. I thought it was seventy-eight. Jeff? Thank you.
Six cents operating budget.
Yep.
Twenty-one cents collective bargaining agreement, $1.11 for grade six, and 51 cents for a loss of revenue, and zero for the other two, because there's no taxes.
Thank you. Any other questions related to the School District budget? Okay, that, that, that the school board and, and the representative want to move on, that you're welcome to do that, if you want to say your thoughts. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think the next item is to discuss the Rollford Water District, and Bob Dean isn't here, but it's burn, and you can speak to any questions.
Is, is one here, he has an ex officio to replace Paul, or is he here with the white information? Have you been authorized by the White District to be there, don't remember?
Yes. I think when we started, you were sort of like.
Just wondering, so there's not, it's a question.
They were like, and we're, um, the time to talk, we're, we're, we're. Thank you, everybody. Jeff. A little, you change the word. Speak with water here. Well, definitely all of us speak on that. Question that's your hand, that are you representing the district, have an ex officio about members or not?
I'm likely a super member, so.
So you're not going to?
No. I was mistaken, right?
Actually, if you really wanted to describe, ex officio members should not.
Whatever, let's go on.
Okay, that's, that's, I don't believe you're allowed to, but there's a couple of things that were that I presented earlier in terms of our process, that burn has raised to be, is that needs.
Please to test.
So what we have done in past years, and what I assume we'll be doing this year, was that we would have the Rollford Water District, but hearing at the same time as the town, but hearing. I'm informed by, by Burn, is that we're not, not able to have that hearing until no sooner than 60 days before the annual meeting. I can't verify that, or, you know, that's, that's what I'm hearing. It's different than what we've done in the past, and we did last year, and we have S B two at town, so it's a little different. So we have certain guidelines under S B two as to when we can, when we have to have our hearings in the years. Similarly, the Water District has that. They are still on to that town, meeting schedule, and we're on S B two schedule. Is that, is that fair?
We are traditional town meeting schedule.
Right.
So our takes are actually much later than S B two, by almost the month.
So while we will hopefully get through the questions, and we can, we can vote to bring the Water District budget forward for public hearing, that public hearing is not going to be next week. Is that, am I correct?
Because there are, there is a warrant article we're proposing for bonding borrowing. We can be, have the hearing on that no earlier than 60 days, and then later than 45 days we're going to be having to do a double list. So we're being strengthened by that.
Understood it. So that's 60 days is what they.
I have a, I have a.
Okay, but it's not next week?
No, no.
So that's, that's why Burn has made a point, we can't have, well, that can't be their public hearing, so they need to have a public hearing because of borrowing money, and it has to be within that time.
We're from the ship.
So normally, we would have a, we would deliberate, and we would recommend a budget, usually after a hearing, so we heard the town has a say about it.
Excuse me. Could we have you guys move outside and have your conversation, because we're having hearing problems? Thanks.
Well, I was trying to write the same here. Usually, we would have, we would have a public hearing, so that the budget committee could hear from the public what the thoughts are before we made a recommendation. So if we want to do that, I think what would happen is we would need to wait for that hearing, and we'd have to have the budget meeting after that hearing to decide whether we want to vote to recommend, or, so would we vote to recommend or not recommend? We, we could, I suppose, decide to vote to recommend after next, after, you know, before then, but we would be having a vote input.
So you just do it after hearing, you do it after the hearing, and let it know we take it forward. It's no, they're going to want you to take that.
So today, we'll take it forward.
After their, after their hearing, because this is a public hearing, like P E public hearing.
Yes.
Same, same process as this, just later.
Right. So.
I'm completely confused. I understand what we're doing today. What we're doing today is what we couldn't do at our last meeting, because there was no way that we could hold a sewer. And that is, whenever we do hold our public hearing on the water and sewer, this is the budget that we're going to be talking to the public about, presenting to the public. What I'm confused about is, I know now that the dates of the public hearing have a constrained window, and next week isn't within. So we have to, the budget that we may or may not, whatever budget we decide to bring forward today, which is why we're meeting, has to, the public hearing that we hold on that has to be within those windows. What's unclear to me is, is the bond hearing, is the, because I don't remember this, is the bond hearing under, is that your part of meeting, or is it also part of the budget committee? Who's managing? Who, who moderates, or who, who takes the lead on a public hearing on a bond?
When you were selected and you weren't S B two, you held a hearing, because it's a warrant article. Now, prior to that, budget committee may recommend or not recommend that you go forward with borrowing, but you still have to have a public hearing regarding your borrowing, which is separate from the budget committee, right? Got it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So should the, should we, the budget committee schedule a public hearing after the bond hearing, because we're going to be asked to recommend or not recommend the bond warrant article, assuming that there is one? And so wouldn't we want to hear what the public discussion is on that, on that, before we decide to recommend or not recommend?
That would be, I was assuming, I was just saying, that if we, if you wanted to do it sooner than that, we wouldn't be getting a public input, and that, and that's not typically what we're hoping to give, except, yeah.
No, I think I just have to process it, it's a suicide myself, so.
Ideally, we would have a public hearing on our budget and borrowing on the same day, for efficiency's sake. Does that not make sense?
Yes, it does.
We have a plan for that day, or?
We're looking at sometime between February 21st and February 24th. I say looking at, looking at, because there's a procedure in here that says you have to have at least one hearing, but, and then where is it? That you can have subsequent hearings after that date, if you need to, especially for petition warrant articles.
So the dates that you've given us, are they the early part of your window, or the latter part of your window?
They are between the February 21st and February 24th.
Sixty and 25.
Yeah.
Is that towards the early part, or towards late?
I'm sorry.
That's towards the early part.
It is.
February 21st or 24th, is when they're looking?
That's not the window, that's the, sort of like the window that the water district wants to present to us.
I'm sorry, I could have stayed right there. The 14th, 11th.
Also the window, that's the window that you, in which you would like to schedule that?
But the 14th is earlier than the 60-day window, if you're using March 17th as your annual meeting date.
If you take March 17th, subtract 60 days, that means somewhere in the latter part of January.
Eighteenth, January eighteenth. So the 14th is like part of that 60-day.
We're talking February.
February, February, sorry.
But we want to have our public hearing on the budget, at the same time we have the hearing on the borrowing, so for efficiency's sake.
Should we just see how we think about the 15th February, just Saturday, 9:00 here?
So I get to proposing to have a meeting in 15th of February to deliberate over and recommend. Well, that's, that's a hearing, that's your hearing, so.
Our public hearing.
It's a public hearing in the annual budget, and then there's a public hearing.
Well, Burn's looking at that, it's the first weekend of the February vacation for our schools.
Thank you.
February vacation for the schools is the 14th, is, you know, it's the week of the 15th through the 22nd, you know, 16th through 22nd. Don't make a guess either.
You proposing to throw up down?
Well. Well, it doesn't have to be a Saturday either.
Yeah, I was just thinking, should we?
Any, any day.
You said there was the start.
Which is lovely.
You said it was the start of it?
Yes. So basically, Friday the 14th through Sunday the 23rd, which is our. That's cool, isn't it? Can't it be like the last week? I'm getting a third party.
Why don't we all, because the schools on vacation, why is that?
His parents might be away, families might be gone, and those are the people, many of the people who factored us would be in the bucket. Yeah. Sure, we didn't, no, it's our meeting.
No, one of the, one of them is ours.
So one of them is ours.
Right. It makes sense to do it at the same time. I'm all for that. Yeah.
What about, well, the 11th is the primary, what about the 12th of February? So Wednesday evening?
Well, it's still vacation, isn't it?
No, it's.
We had it down to Sunday, for the, for the 11th, for the budget.
But that's the whole change, because it's the primary.
Oh.
It's up to.
We're talking about the, the, you know, fall out, you know?
Say at 6:00 P M?
At 6:00 P M.
So we would present our annual budget, you would then, we would adjourn it, we set adjourned, and then we would do the bond hearing, which is a separate meeting, actually. And then when that is adjourned, then the budget committee, they're talking about. Does that sound fair?
Just one slight semantic thing. It's not that the budget committee is going to present the budget. We will probably likely turn it over to the Water District, right? But the budget committee will present the budget, and then, then we'll close that meeting, John will close that meeting, and the Water District will open up the bond hearing, that will be closed, and then we will re-meet to do our recommendations.
And where's the location, honey?
I was thinking that the Legion, the River View, very nice place.
Is it large enough?
Oh, yes.
Well, I think I took the meetings over to John.
Yeah, it's up to us to decide.
See this, but I'm, I'm open to that for a second.
Well, I just wanted to check this, this building's schedule while he is still here, that's why I'm asking. So we're going to go.
Shall we, shall we check to see if the Legion is available?
I will.
And then, and then if that's not, we can see off what the alternatives are. And if you follow up with me, we're on, okay?
Sure. I'll check with Cheryl, Carol, and reserve the review.
That's the one on the other side, they could move, yeah, the bigger one. It holds $200. So, $200, thank you.
Yes, can you hand it back to accessible? There's a bar right downstairs, that makes any difference.
I could be helpful. Could you buy a beer too, or one or anything?
I'll go ahead, we push that.
Let's, let's move, so that's, that's where we're going to meet at 6:00 P M on the 12th for a public hearing, and we'll work on, we have, I'm sure, I'm sure of the location. Now, the reason that we waited to bring the Water District budget forward to a public hearing, was that there were, there were still questions, and there was nobody, and we didn't answer the questions. So I'm, right now, I'm going to name questions on the Water District budget, which is, which is. Angela, do you have some questions?
I have a lot of questions, but they are precipitated by the meeting on Wednesday night, and so my budget questions have to do with changes that seem to happen on Monday night. If people had questions about the budget prior to, not, not about Wednesday this week, if people had questions on the budget prior to that meeting Wednesday, might be helpful, those questions to be answered to.
Do we have fresh copies of the budget as currently existing?
The same as it was before.
What's the before, the one you?
I emailed you, Sean, to come out, to, you probably, vote in the district. Here's one. All great, all, no, that's not right, a little right, you can go on one. It looks like that's, feels that, used by.
Well, I'll go ahead then, since my face is on the ground. So there was a meeting of the district on Wednesday night, and a number of transactions occurred that have impacted on this budget. So I want to start there. First of all, I noticed that there's a $4,000 increase in the administrative line item of your budget. That was there in the previous, at the previous meeting, the budget that we had. Two thousand water, two thousand sewer, total of 4,000.
Are you talking water or sewer?
I'm talking both budgets right now. Total increase of 4,000.
Can I do this?
I'm sorry. I'm talking about the administrative per share rate of administration.
What number?
I don't have a number. It's down the, it's at the bottom of the page, just before the bottom line. I don't have a number, it's down the, it's at the bottom of the page, just before the bottom line. 2019 is 25,529 water, which is, water. And for 2020, 2020, 27,500, so it's actually a $2,000 increase there. And $2,000 increase on the sewer side, same, same numbers. So in total, a $4,000 increase to the administrative line. And it, it what, it became clear on Wednesday that the, there was an impact, potential impact of a new position that the commissioners, not a new position, a new staff person that the commissioners added on Wednesday night, an interview that took place at the start of the meeting and when we reconvened, there was a new person added to the staff at the Water Sewer District. So it wasn't clear to me, duties were moved around, the clerk lost all responsibilities for administrative responsibility, for example, and the treasurer's responsibilities were changed somewhat. So it's confusing to me what is happening with staffing in relation to this budget at the Water Sewer District. And in total, a $4,000 impact to this budget, which at the time, when we were first deliberating on this budget, it was not really clear where that $4,000 was. But now it seems it may be related to this new staff person who was the, okay? Well, okay, I'll let me pause there. Because it appears duties have been removed and.
Wages, personnel line, which is 37.
Line 47.
37.
37. I don't see where 37 is.
We have a full version.
Can you tell, what's the, what's the?
It's called personnel expenses.
Personnel expenses, oh, here.
So this is the one you emailed to us?
No, I think, I think I already emailed, except for another one.
I see, so you took $3,400 out of that line and, and then, I'm just.
Hey, but look at the bottom of the, maybe.
I'm looking at the latest one that we have. So this is why it would have been really nice to have come with copies for all of us because people are looking at one email and this one and that one. It is, if this is the one, we should probably try to make copies of this.
Wait, wait, make sure you got the right one. Doesn't it have one?
How would we, how would we know?
Is this the person?
That one's right.
Would you mind, thank you so much. Well, she just followed, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Now we will, we will get the same, watch it.
So what is the top share?
How many lines?
And that 12th.
It's going to be used for supplies, equipment, things of administrative costs if there was, I'm trying to remember the detailed statements, there's a lot of detail there.
So there's 4,000 added in total, 2,000 water, 2,000 sewer. I thought that that had some sort of personnel relationship because I was looking at admin as a personnel task, but none of that is included there, personnel is not? Okay, so I may have it wrong, but I know that some responsibilities shifted on Wednesday night, shifted away from staff who are currently employed by the district. I don't know where those duties are going to land, perhaps that's one question in this budget.
Again, I was going to say, ask a question, are you asking a question as to whether that changes the quoted line item?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out, yes.
So, so is there, is there a change to the salary based on changes that were made?
Right.
Pre-crease of, basically, is this actual, is it current?
And where might we find that information in the budget?
Some of this stuff has to do with personnel actions, which are confidential.
You hired a new person, so where is that?
The net cost is leveled, the net cost is leveled.
So was that publicly, was that position done in a public way, was there a notice about that?
I might raise a question. I think some of this, some of this conversation, and I know that there are serious issues that really affect people, but some of this conversation seems perilously close to governance issues, which are really not viewed by the committee.
I see it as trying to understand the budget in relation to.
But whether they held a public, I don't even know.
Okay.
I think if we can keep the question specific to the line items on the budget, it is.
Okay, so my other question has to do with whether or not you will fill a position this year that has been vacant for about seven months and how that position is going to perhaps change the bottom line if that position is filled. There's been a big position in the Sewer District.
We are looking, we have candidates. We have at least one that would. Now that I can't, it's personnel.
That's reflected in this budget?
Yes.
I have a question. Can you, can you just reconfirm, have you hired an additional person to your staff? How is that, how's that be as well as the other meetings? You have an additional, you didn't let anybody go, you have an additional position you hired that you did not budget for for the new year, correct?
Well, this person takes over functions that people in the past had, but the people who had them in the past have been transitioned to another line item, which is operational.
So whatever changes a previous employee doing some of these functions, that money is going to another position, which will not increase the budget, so you're not spending anymore.
The function is changing, the person is still there.
On the two, the two other ones. The two people that are changing their jobs are still there.
We made some changes in responsibilities.
Yeah.
The net cost is, is that even?
But you added a person.
Yes.
And so where, where are the funds coming from in the budget for that? Within what you have?
Yeah.
And there's no, it will not go over and not, okay.
So, so did you have this in mind when you first presented this budget and that's why they're already here? I guess that's the.
We had it in mind and when we, I'm trying to stay on this side of confidentiality, when we discussed how we would handle this in the future, we had to be mindful that we could not, you should not exceed the budget in that area, so we did not.
None of this discussion, if I'm hearing correctly?
When this was prepared.
It was already here, so there's nothing that was done that changes this, nothing.
Can I just get a clarification? The only place we're going to see personnel expenses in this year's budget is in line 36 on water and 37 on sewer, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's nothing on line 36 on this budget, but are we talking?
On the water, 36 water.
36 on water, 37 on.
Yes, 36 on water. Is there long-term impact of this new position on the operating budget? For example, benefits in terms of, you know, salary and benefits, are there long-term impacts? For this new position?
We can only plan for one year, that's all we're allowed to do.
And there are no benefits attached to this position, right?
There may be that I can talk about.
It's a budget decision, it's a budget.
I can only give you the grand total.
Well, we talk about it all the time, I don't, I don't understand why you can't answer a question about do they get benefits or not? You're not telling us what the benefits are.
There are, in the loosest sense of term, there are benefits.
And are those, are those in here?
They are, they're, this was created a while ago, this particular action does not exceed that projected expense.
And is that included in personnel expenses?
Yeah.
We don't have a separate line, you don't have salaries and wages and then benefits, so it might make next year, it might be nice to try.
Yeah, and that's a little different, though, you guys are very small.
Oh, okay, all right, good.
What you cannot do is you cannot say if it's a family plan or a two-person plan or, or a single plan because that identifies an individual. But you can say they, you offer benefits, you have to say that because it's part of the budget, but you just can't identify what benefits you're offering. And because you have such a small staff, you would be able to identify that and I understand that part of the program, you can't say you're offering benefits.
Yes.
Charlie, any questions?
Yeah, Vern, can you explain on the sewer budget, the two benefits items, one on maintenance or any considerations there? One, I think, two, yes.
I think we talked about this the last time, that is, there's a definitional problem between capital improvement and maintenance and repairs. And this is one of the things we're worried about coming here. Maintenance and repairs are things that do not substantially change, equipment, lines, so forth. It's repair, like doing the oil change, that's maintenance, okay? If you put a new engine in a car, that's a capital improvement. And the problem was people were sort of slipping between the two. You know, if you took a valve, like a major valve, and you reseated it and kind of all of us, they call that a capital improvement, well, it is, it's maintenance and repair. Now, if you took a valve out and replaced it with a new valve, it's a capital improvement. But getting that definitional understanding across is just, was very hard.
For the bookkeeper?
Yes.
But that's changed now.
We're going to watch more closely, let's just say.
Because, I mean, does the bookkeeper get the input from the commissioners or does it just take a chart of accounts and?
They get it from the superintendent, they get it mostly from the superintendent. And we need the administrative org to understand they report to us and capitalizations that are determined by us.
Superintendent knows the facilities, but doesn't know what's happening.
You have all these licenses, that's great, but you know, understanding the equity credits and accrual accounting, that's a whole different department.
I have another question about legal things. Are you anticipating any kind of response that may increase the legal liability in the district from the decisions made on Wednesday, transitions in staff responsibilities, essentially people perhaps bringing action against the commissioners? I'm, I'm, I'm asking that as a serious question.
Yes, I'm very serious.
Right now, 20,000, 20,000 is budgeted for legal, legal expenses. And that increase happened because you keep saying there are these personnel issues that of course are confidential and cannot be publicly discussed. Are you expecting or anticipating any kind of reaction in terms of personnel in response to the decisions that were made?
Is that the end of the question?
It most certainly is.
We never know who might decide actually happens every year with me. You never know if you're going to get sued, okay? It may be for a totally frivolous reason that you have to be prepared to defend yourself. And if you have a situation in the past where someone was frequently threatened, sued, you want to be aware that that could occur again. So you prepare for it.
And that's the line, it's currently $10,000 each side.
Water 10, sewer 10.
Yes.
It's one, not on sewer, oh, yeah, just.
In water is 25, no, is 10, yes.
So you're just budgeting for it in case it comes up?
Yes. Well, it's, it's realizing that there are many risks and one must prepare for that risk, like why you buy homeowners insurance? Well, we're buying legal insurance.
I think your question was more whether you think you might exceed the line now on the, because.
I'm not.
I'm going to have to, that's a great point.
So, you don't have any history for the legal line? Do you have an idea of?
No, but we've seen other professional services, which are line 96 and sewer.
Do you have any idea what portion of other professional services you expect on legal in 2018 or 2017?
I don't know. If not, there wasn't that much.
Right, because a jump from 500 to 10,000 is crazy.
Right.
I think it's also a change in the superintendent, um, position title, position. So it all.
Yes, yes. Knowing, being over the school board and knowing what would happen if we had a many thousand percent increase in the line item.
Like the school, you don't know the child with somewhere profound special evidence in the town, you don't know that, but you have to prepare for it.
We do, and we have fun for that.
Yes, which you prepare for.
We do, absolutely. It's just striking that the preparation was less than 3,500 previously and now it's 10,000. 20,000.
Other questions?
We may have spoken about this, Vern, earlier, but could you explain, apparently we have some debt, you have some debt, you have a capital expense principal, one of the capitals, expenses in first 20, 27 and 28, on, no.
Water or sewer?
Sewer.
Yes.
Could you just explain what that is, it seemed to be pretty complex.
The sewer line is in the downtown area.
That was a big.
Okay, but there was a, there's an, it's an instrument out there that you're paying on.
You never pay that.
Not having heard anything about the budget before on this, I just needed to know. I don't think we talked about it, if we did, I missed it. What our, what your bond is on that.
That's just.
You're making friends for it.
That's just that year's word.
Right.
That's not good.
Well, I know, I know, I see 217, 218, pretty much the same, right across the board, but.
When does that bond expire? Is it, is it eight, one bond? It's one bond?
That one is 2030, 2033, long time.
Is it the same bond, just on each, on each?
No.
They're different.
One is a sewer, one specifically is sewer. There's another one that where we did all the water lines in downtown, that's another one.
So which is the one that goes till 2023, please? Or do they both go to 2030, 2033?
One goes to like 20, I'm off the top, like 2027 or 2029, something like that. Because when you go to RDA and you go to Bombay.
I just wanted, I just wanted to know when A expires, it's all.
Well, one of the, it's finally paid off this year, yeah, 2020, the final payment. That was from DES, it was for upgrades to the 400s, about 10,000 plus all.
So there's more than two bonds? Well, I, so I'm getting, so one bond expires in 2030, let's say, another one maybe 2027, and now there's something else that has a final payment next year?
Yes.
So there are three insurance.
There's three debts, yes.
Okay, two bonds and?
Yes.
Thank you. And they're all represented in those two lines on each of these things, on lines, capital, the principal and the interest.
There's a poor line.
So one was collection system, one was the plan. I see everybody's still looking at it, so.
I'm still, I'm still confused about your personnel line. So, can we go both, this personnel line, we need to, okay. So. The personnel expenses look like they're going up substantially, right? So, well, this year, oh, year to date, I'm looking at year to date, sorry, looking at year to date in between. So 130, that doesn't change.
Essentially, the capital.
Sewer.
It's a pretty bad report.
Yep, yep. I was looking at the year to date column, not the budget. Yes, but not the budget. Sorry. No, 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 it's okay, I understand, I'll take them up here.
Charlie? Just for point of clarification, Bern, on the water budget, you need to say line twenty seven and twenty eight is the instrument that got retired this year. And the bond is twenty five and twenty six on the water. Okay, so that's, that's the one that's ongoing through twenty twenty seven or something.
Actually, what happened is, the bond to improve General John Sullivan was mistakenly put in the sewer budget, and so it had to be pulled over and put in the water budget. They said Foundry Street, so they thought it was the Foundry Street pumping station where the wastewater, it wasn't, it was for Wells.
No, no. When you say they, you talk about the previous commission.
Yes.
So you inherited...
Yes, I did.
But it got...
Well, it's in those things.
Okay. But that's why it appears on the water budget now. It didn't appear on the water budget last year.
Because it was mistakenly put in sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Can you confirm how many employees are getting paid raises in this budget? For both waters?
Within the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, because you know it falls forward. Well, there's one person that got two dollars per hour, and one that had their hours increased.
Okay, so only one got a pay increase in the budget?
Yes, yes. Any other questions?
Not about the operating budget, but are there going to be warrant articles, and when do we see the warrant articles?
Were you talking about that, any theory on Hartland? No, the fault?
Yes, but are there other warrant articles? There's going to be, it's a bond warrant article, okay?
Right now, we're considering putting in an ethics warrant article?
No, I don't.
Okay, money, money, right.
It's money.
I don't believe so.
Okay, so these little things down here that are Willy Street, Porter Street?
Yes, those are, those are a bond one.
Oh, there was just a detail of what, so, oh, okay, thank you.
Bern, any more questions? I have something I have to talk about. It's not strictly related to the budget, but it is related to process. Okay. Any other questions? Angela, you indicated at the meeting on the N C that the receivers of the checklist...
Supervisors of checklist, yes.
Do you have people who have already expressed an interest?
There are several people who've been suggested, including you suggested Ken Shore.
They should show up on the twenty second, because according to RSA six seventy four, we need a point of knowledge. Would you like a copy of the law on there? I think we're twenty outside.
I think we are, I think we are, you can take this up with me, I think it's out of the purpose of the budget committee.
Any other questions on the budget? What we did down there.
Okay, I think we're looking for a motion to bring the budget as written forward for presentation at the hearing on twelve.
Yeah.
Substitution of the list.
Now, looking, I confirm the review room at the pre-cha, and I'm ready to figure out there, so a couple will get it.
Before we do that, can I, I'd like to make sure we're all with the right budget, and we're talking about the right total. So right now, I'm still not sure about these detail lines underwater, thirty-nine, forty, thirty-one, because I see a total appearing forty-five thousand, five hundred and eight, but then I see a total budget of four hundred and thirteen thousand. So I don't know, I don't know what those detail lines are there for. If they're, if they're adding to it, then, how come they're not in the operating budget? Do you know what I mean, these lines, thirty nine?
Yes, I know exactly what you mean. When it says Willie Street, Porter Wells, General John Sullivan, and engineering protocol, that would be the total cost of those loans, okay?
Are they, but they're not within the operating budget?
No.
So are they going to be warrant articles?
What you have below is the total, two hundred thousand, four hundred?
All of those are going to be part of...
Yes, borrowing passes, yes.
Okay, so they will not otherwise, they will be part of the bond warrant?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the annual cost, which will be part of the operating budget, will be forty-three thousand, two sixty-two.
Because that's most of us.
Because they give us a rate on our initiative.
We usually don't start paying right away, do you?
We would start, we're proposing starting with the first of twenty twenty.
So that's the prorated interest cost?
That's an annualized principal and interest expense, forty-three thousand.
So, the estimated cost for this budget though, is as a prorated part of that? If you're only going to start paying interest in November, or thereabouts, and this is annualized fee, then you're just paying two twelfths for it.
Right. Now, we also want to do a capital improvement savings, like the school does, like the town does, of twenty-one thousand, for the trustees and trust funds.
So will that be a warrant article?
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, okay, so there will be a warrant, another warrant.
Yeah, actually, there'll be a warrant article for twenty-five thousand included as well. Listen, I'm so focused on just the operating budget, I have a problem.
And just to, just to clarify, when we voted to bring the town budget forward, we still didn't have more necessarily, so we got the, not that's ideal, but...
No, if we're going to vote on the operating budget, though, I need to know what that amount is in the operating budget, it's really not clear to me, what's warrant, yes. And as a matter of fact, that interest, that forty-five thousand, should be up there in the operating budget to be totaled within the operating budget.
Well...
Just one other question, maybe?
Maybe it's subject to vote, so we start...
Well, it's all subject to vote, Bern, but nonetheless, the interest that you're paying is part of an operating budget. And so it should be up there, you could give it another line, you can say whatever you want to call it, proposed, but it needs to be part of the operating budget. So, which gets me back to my question, what if we, what is the number that we're voting on for an operating budget?
Four hundred thirteen thousand, eight seven, whole budget.
That's not an operating budget, that's not the operating budget.
That is the operating budget, those two warrant articles included, which, when you pass the warrant articles, it becomes our balance.
Yes, but there's going to be one warrant article that says operating budget with an amount, it does not include the bond, and it does not include any of the capital improvement. What is that, what is that amount in that particular warrant article? Because that's what the budget that we're bringing forward has to be able to distinguish.
Line thirty-eight in water, and line thirty-nine in sewer, three forty-five, five oh eight for water, and three seventy-seven, zero seventy-seven for water, and then the bottom two, for a total of forty-one hundred.
What you're saying, I think what you're saying, Suzanne, is that when these warrants pass, there's going to be an operating component of the operating budget, that is the principal interest that would be added to the, probably, the...
I understand that.
No, but so the number, this number doesn't include that, what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that if we are not moving forward with an operating budget of three hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and eight for water, it's that plus two twelfths of the, of the anticipated, not granted, it may not pass, but that's, that's the, but the operating budget is that we're bringing forward.
And you would bring plus the twenty-five thousand for the capital?
No, that, that will be a separate, that's a separate part.
I know that's a warrant article.
Yeah, but...
If it passes, it would be the full part of the operating budget.
Yeah, that's what you just did with the...
Yes, but they, but the...
And that's twenty-five, well, bad to bad, if it passes, it is a separate.
Right, so, but even though it's, you have to anticipate, because that's, that's there. And so the two twelfths of that annualized interest should be up there as a line in the operating budget.
No. You did, the very same thing when you did the town budget, you kept them separate, and it even says in the warrant article, not including items in separate warrant articles, it says that in wording. So you have to start with the operating budget, three forty-five, five oh eight, and then you have warrant articles for capital improvements, and warrant articles for capital reserves.
All right, nice game, correct.
And then, if they all pass, they'll go up for the operating.
All right, so, all right, so now what we're voting on, bringing forward, is a water budget of three hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, and a sewer budget of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven six. Sorry for the confusion, apologies. Angela, that's helpful.
Would you like to do those separately?
I, I'm happy to find you, sorry. I so moved, so moved.
Nice second. Did you catch it up? So, any more discussion? Okay, and we'll go over all of them.
And the, and the motion is...
That's okay.
Could you just repeat the motion, Bob?
The motion, the motion is to bring the water, the water sewer district budgets, the water being three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five oh eight, and the, and the sewer budget being three hundred and seventy-seven, zero seventy-seven, forward to public hearing of presentation on the twelfth of February. And so let's separate it forward, and we will, you will meet and convene after that hearing, consider public input, and then vote to recommend or not. But you also quote, you're not recommending the warrant. Right, sorry, it's, all, all the articles that have a, a... So, any more discussions? All in favor of bringing it forward to the hearing, say, oh, we're school, sorry, we're going to do Joe first, in your favor?
Yes.
Denise?
No.
Yes. Emily?
Yes, I'm going to take a play, a page out of Suzanne's book and say that I'm really concerned with presenting this budget, not because of the numbers, but because of the way it's presented, I find it clearly confusing, and I'm really concerned that the, the budget committee struggles to talk with any certainty about it, which makes me further concerned that the town people are not going to understand that.
Denise, is that what you felt, no?
Yes, I don't think it's clear on, on how it's being done, and I'm against the salaries that you put as only one person.
I vote for it. Amanda?
I'm going to move ahead to present, but with similar sorts of concerns that Emily raised, what else do we not know in this budget? It just, no, there's a lot of, like, yes.
So we vote yes, and say that, you know, if we don't, so this maybe just argues that we should get involved in this earlier, because it's our budget that we're bringing forward, so if we don't like this, then we need to figure out how to suggest to the water district that they present it, because this is, I mean, what we're voting on is, so we're saying this is ours.
Because does it have to be presented, you make clarifications, so the numbers are all, it seems to be we're okay with, it's how it's presented to be clear, can it just be presented in a PowerPoint, like, so, so that people's broken down, and people understanding what the business components are, so it's presented better, so it's more clear, would that make a difference?
We could choose to present it, I mean, this, it is, it is our public hearing, this is our budget.
But we're talking about the, we're talking about the way it's presented, more than what the numbers are.
Yes, we could choose, we, somebody here could choose to present it, so, it's, it's something we can, we can work on, yes, we can make it better, I think, so, that I'm saying yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, what's the number, is there?
Oh, one, no, everybody else is yes.
Okay, so here's, how it's being...
So in terms of the priority of our presentation, I think the way the school department presents the budget and makes clear what the warrant article is, separate from the total, what it means, you know, if this does not get approved, what's the default budget, all that was really clear in the school department's presentation, so it answered a lot of questions before the conversation began. And I think, especially with regard to the below the bottom line, those who cares, that has to be really much clearer, there's not a lot of clarity in a bottom line vote for that. It would help, as Suzanne said, to have some of that, the warrant articles presented in a way that says this is what you're voting on, and here's the impact of the budget annually, which is different, different than the total cost of these projects, the annual impact is not the same, so...
So in the, in the presentation, you would expect to have warrant articles, and is that, so that we could totally, we could do that, right?
Yes.
I think that Bern kind of addressed questions that the committee is, the whole at, when he said to revise and your accounting. And maybe that will clear up the presentation, but the inconsistencies made it very confusing this year, and if you could carry all of our suggestions forward with presentation next year, I'm sure we'll all feel much better about it.
My hope is that it will be much clearer, with the presentation, there's a lot of inherited misinformation and miscategorization here that has to be cleaned up.
But it will be cleaned up for next year, so that we can count on the first presentation and understand it, and give the ability of revision, so be consistent, right?
Okay. If we like that, remember, I don't have an administrative system, and I don't have to say you to provide, I have to do that. I have to do this all by myself.
You can do it. You understand it, and you understand it probably better than any of us could, because we spent so much time on it, but it isn't coming through the first time, the way the school budget did.
So, with that, I would ask, does anyone have a business, I think Angela had a point to bring up, please?
Oh, yes. February eleventh is the primary, and so our snow date was supposed to be February eleven, or...
That'd be due to snow date?
No, I think, it was on your, it's on your...
Yeah, but it's not ours to schedule.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the date that we have for, a snow date that we have up here, this, this that you sent out to us, the snow date for the year of May. So, right now, we have a deliberative session for the town meeting scheduled for the eighth of February, right?
And what Suzanne's saying, we, we have it there for informational purposes, but that's not for us to set, so, so we should...
That would be ours, that's a smart horse.
Yes, so the snow date right now, is the eleventh, is the primary. Of course.
Any other, any other business? Waiting for a motion?
A motion.
Nice second, call the chairman or the guy.
Hold on, just hold that.
Do they just want to see this card? Oh my God, it's on my table.
It's still on.
Yeah, you can just take that one.
That one's not mine.
No, I know that.